Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call this August 27th meeting of the City Council to order. The time is now 7:30. Would you all please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
(Inaudible)
Judy is the clerk. Would you please call roll?
Cannon.
Here.
Budmats.
Present.
O'Brien.
Here.
Veneziano.
Here.
Besessi.
Here.
Diastis.
Present.
Sanica.
Here.
With seven present and nobody absent, there is a quorum. Therefore, members of the audience are reminded that these proceedings are being videotaped for current and future broadcasts over the city's cable television channel. With that, the first order of business would be to approve the minutes from the August 13th City Council meeting. Is there a motion to approve these minutes?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Sanica. Thank you, Alderman Besessi, for the second. Are there any corrections, additions, or dilations to these minutes?
I would like to make two additions, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
The first being Director Robert Horn's comments regarding the details of the grant funding for the completed Euclid bike path. On page 10 of today's agenda, item four, this item was not included in the final minutes. On that same page, item five, Manager Krumbstock requests that item seven of the draft agenda be removed to discuss G1 license requirements. I understand that staff required additional time to review this item before we revisit G1 license requirements at a committee of the whole, and that this item ultimately was not added to that final agenda. But I would ask that the discussion with Alderman Budmats be included in the record to explain why item seven was not included in the committee of the whole.
Noted. Any further comments or questions? Seeing none, the question is, shall these minutes be approved? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, and the minutes are approved. Moving on to the mayor's report, I just want to mention a couple of quick items. In these past two weeks, we had the wind down by the creek after the commencement of the school year, so it was definitely in order. Great turnout by residents. Thank you for all of the staff and volunteers that assisted to help make it better. There was a little bit of rain, but it didn't seem to stop anybody from having a good time or the event from continuing, so kudos to that. Kirchhoff Road, I've received quite a bit of emails saying that we're now paved, not yet painted, but it's big steps and baby steps, it's all the same, and so progress is being made, and I have a lot of happy emails instead of angry ones. We also had another successful city market this past weekend, and there will be an upcoming Labor Day party this Sunday. We had a ribbon cutting for a new Edward Jones office over by Station 16 on Plum Grove Road by the junior high last week. That was pretty interesting. Christine is a wonderful woman, part of the Chamber of Commerce as well. And then we had on Euclid a ribbon cutting for the new extension of the bike path. There was a really good turnout. Director Horn, thank you for the presentation you gave with that ribbon cutting, and I was impressed by everyone that turned out. There's a lot of enthusiasm around that. Are there any other award reports for this evening? Alderman Sanica.
I received a request to assist with a building permit to remodel a residential bathroom. The resident was very upset with how long the permit approval process allegedly first submitted in May and rejected in August took. I do appreciate Don Wenzel and Rob Horn for their swift remediation of the issue within 24 hours. They did respond to the resident and were able to get the permit processed and approved within that week. So many thanks to them for their support. I also received feedback on recreational cannabis from various residents. Some of my residents requested that any locations for cannabis dispensaries stay off the beaten path, as they said, and away from residential areas, schools, and major shopping areas. I understand we will not be discussing zoning and recreational cannabis at tonight's meeting, but I would like the record to reflect that I've heard those residents and will take the requests into consideration going forward on this issue.
Thank you. Anything further? Any other award reports from any councilmen this evening? Alderman Cannon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to go along with your thoughts on Kirchhoff, out in my area, there's been five roads that were redone, reconstructed, and I would just like to report that I have no negative comments, which in many cases is very mixed for happy residents, because you always hear about them if things don't go well. So I would, again, hats off to Public Works, they did an outstanding job. Construction is never perfect, never easy. I think most of the residents out there are very, very happy with the way they were treated by our staff and by both the contractor also. So thanks to everybody.
Thank you for sharing. Further comments or award reports? Alderman Besessi.
Along the same lines with construction, people in the fifth ward know the roads are being lifted up at the moment for new water mains. I've talked with our Public Works, and they've let me know that the project is currently ahead of schedule, and everyone would like to thank the residents for their patience while we go through and install the new water mains. So that's basically it.
Thank you. And moving on from our award reports, seeing as how we've wrapped that part up, we will move on to, oh goodness, the opening of the floor for the public for the next 20 minutes. I do see six signatures on the sign-in sheet, but before I begin calling them up, I just want to read a quick set of rules. And in order to secure the rights of citizens of the city to a fair and just representation before the elected officials, and to guarantee to elected officials an order in dignified form in which to conduct city's business, no person shall be allowed to engage in any activity that will disturb or disrupt orderly proceedings of the City Council. Per the rules of procedures, the public is to address the City Council, and the fact that no member of the City Council responds does not mean that the City Council or any member thereof agrees or disagrees with the comment. In order to attain this objective, the following rules of conduct are hereby established. Any person who seeks to address the City Council at this time for public comments shall be permitted to speak only upon recognition of the presiding officer, and such person shall adhere to the following provisions. Each person addressing the City Council shall state their name and address for the record. Each person shall be granted no more than five minutes of the allotted 20 minutes in order to address the City Council. Questions and/or commentary shall be limited to the city's business. Comments supporting or opposing a nominated person's candidacy for elective office of the city shall be out of order. Commentary shall be directed to the presiding officer unless the presiding officer permits the individual to address council members or other city officers present. Discussion shall take place in a professional manner which displays mutual respect. Profanity shall not be used in any form. That said, the first name on the sign-in sheet is Mark Stasny. Mark Stasny. Yes. Come on up.
Thank you. Yes, I am Mark Stasny. I live at 2106 Kirchhoff, and thank you, Mayor and Alderman, and the people of Rolling Meadows. I've lived on Kirchhoff for about 30 years, and wish to chat with you all regarding the newly paved roadway that is the main artery of Rolling Meadows, and that is also the street in which I live on, which is Kirchhoff Road. I also wish to thank the City Public Works and the state funding for the nearly completed project. Thank you. It was way overdue, I hope it lasts. As I live six houses west of New Wilkie, I can assure you now that we have the smoothest quarter-mile drag strip in the area. The drag strip seems only to be open during the rush hours of the day, that is to say between 5:00 to 8:00 in the mornings, and 3:30 to 6:00 or so in the afternoon. Also unique to this drag strip is it runs both westbound and eastbound, from New Wilkie to the shutdown near the community church, and vice versa. Having brought this topic up to the police and understanding the process of shooting radar in that stretch of Kirchhoff may be challenging, can the concept be looked into again? And I also ask for more visible street patrols during these hours, if that's possible, please. Now, don't get me wrong, I love cars and speed, but not on the street that I live on. Also, I've noticed that the number of 18-wheeled trucks that use Kirchhoff Road from New Wilkie to 53 as a cutover to 53 South has increased steadily over the past five years or so. Most of these trucks have very little or nothing to do with servicing or downtown businesses, but use Kirchhoff as an alternative to 53 ramps at 62 Algonquin Road and also Euclid. Unlike Kirchhoff, Algonquin and Euclid have no residential homes, so between 53 and Wilkie, there is a bit of a concern that I have. In fact, one of the chief trucking lines that is the Armada for trucks that I see living on Kirchhoff as I do are UPS trucks going westbound on Kirchhoff around 7:00 PM or so, sometimes four to five in a row. There's a very nice picture of a said UPS truck as we speak on the city's website as to the Kirchhoff repaving project. It's well-known and documented that these types of trucks can shorten the life of new pavement as such, as we have, and also the noise factors can be very problematic, my idea. For the seat to explore the concept as the city of Chicago does on Lake Shore Drive, restricting via weight all nonessential service trucks on Kirchhoff between Wilkie and Frontage and Hicks, thus forcing these trucks to use the accesses of 53 via Algonquin and Euclid. Yes, I understand this type of a city ordinance would need state and county approval, but I feel it very well may be worth it in the long run, you know, seeing where we're at with the new construction on Kirchhoff and the safety of our citizens. Now, once approved, after this were to be worked out, of course, a grace period and violators could be given warnings or citations, that's a little bit of, you know, forward thinking. But then again, in closing, I wish for Kirchhoff not to turn into another lake street, and with the new building project, townhouses moving forward on Kirchhoff, the safety of our children being paramount, I strongly feel the time to consider these concepts is now, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next name on the sign-in sheet is Ryan Guzman.
Hello, council. Think you guys know myself and my partner Dave by now.
Gentlemen, before I, are you going to speak together?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll try to keep it short tonight. Think everyone's heard what we have going on, everyone's been out to visit, and we just want to reiterate again that we are a restaurant, and we do adhere to the current ordinance, and that's pretty much it. I mean, do you have anything else to add?
No. Just thank you all for all your time. We appreciate it, and we appreciate your consideration.
We'd like to move forward with a vote, if possible, this evening, and move forward with our G1 application.
Thank you.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Maggie Trevor.
Maggie Trevor, 3905 Red Wing Court, and I'm here to speak about the 19 or 92 on your agenda, it's the Hicks Road-Euclid bike path, and specifically, I believe you're voting to on the approval for the engineering, Phase 1 engineering for this. I just want to reemphasize comments that I made to the City Council back in March, that this is a very necessary part of the planned system of bike paths that we have in Rolling Meadows, and it's also part of the comprehensive plan. I also wanted to point out, I know that cost is a concern here, but this is not just addressing an issue of expanding the bike paths, it's addressing an issue with our sidewalks and the safety of the sidewalks along Hicks Road. That particular stretch of Hicks Road only has sidewalks on one half of the street, and I sent a picture of the part of Hicks Road south of Wilson Avenue to Laura Sanica, who I believe distributed it to all of you, that shows that there's a serious flooding problem and a serious freezing problem that's going, I believe will probably necessitate something be done eventually anyways, whether we make it part of the bike path or not. And I feel strongly that we should take advantage of the fact that there are 80/20 matching funds here available if we pursue this grant to help make this project more feasible for Rolling Meadows, and at the same time, helping us enhance our bike path system and enhance the attractiveness of Rolling Meadows as a place to live. Thank you.
Thank you. Next name on the list is Steve Rivarchek.
If you wish, sure.
Then that would leave Steve Hollish.
Steve Hollish, 4811 Deepwood Lane, in Palatine, but it's really Rolling Meadows. I'm glad to see that the first reading for the G1 license is on tonight. I think the petitioner's been very patient with enrolling Meadows, waiting for you to act on it. There was a delay from the last City Council meeting for additional information that was supposed to be presented at the last Committee of the Whole meeting, which really didn't happen, it wasn't on the agenda, because I think that agenda was pretty filled, so there was no good way to get at it. But hopefully tonight, you're going to look for the first reading and approve it. This is an established business, and you're always looking to keep business in Rolling Meadows. They haven't provided any negative things for the community, it's always been positive. They've always been here, they were here at the last Committee of the Whole meeting, so I think tonight, you all should look at the first reading, pass it, and move on to the second reading, because you've impacted them enough for their business. Thank you.
Well, that concludes the floor being open to the public. We'll move on to the next agenda item, which our ordinance is pending. The first one is item A, Ordinance 19-39, to amend the fiscal year 2019 budget and staffing plan. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Thank you, Alderman Sanica. Is there a second? Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. Is there any discussion on this issue? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Besessi.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Sanica.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. Next up, item B, Ordinance Number 19-00, amend the liquor code to approve a Class G1 license for video gaming for Big B's Porthouse located at 1649 Algonquin Road. Again, this was postponed at the August 13th, 2019 City Council meeting. Is there a motion to consider this ordinance for first reading?
So moved.
Thank you, Alderman Sanica. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Veneziano. Is there any discussion on this?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Sanica.
Big B's fulfills the requirement of a G1 license as written and fulfills the sentiment of the ordinance, as I understand it to be a means to bolster sit-down restaurant revenue and help our business community remain competitive. As written, I will be voting to approve the G1 license tonight.
Thank you. Any further, Alderman Diastis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was under the impression when this was tabled at the last meeting that the council would have conversation on the G1 itself, and since we've not had that conversation, I'd make a motion to postpone this to October 22nd, so the council has an opportunity to revisit the G1.
Is there a second to Alderman Diastis's motion?
I would second.
Okay, so Alderman O'Brien.
I understand it too.
Okay, and this was, again, kind of based on, one, agenda items and the ability to focus on the ordinance itself, there's a lot of language that does need to be revisited because of the nature of this ordinance and its youth. It's a year old, and we should take the time to massage it. However, if you were to postpone it this time, again, all it does is hinder a business in our community from moving forward. But if we have a second, then I guess we can go ahead and take the call on that motion. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Diastis.
Yes.
Sanica.
No.
Cannon.
Yes.
Budmats.
No.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
No.
Besessi.
Yes.
With five in favor and two opposed, this ordinance, I'm sorry, four to three. I can't count, I apologize. The ordinance still is postponed, then, at this point.
Mayor, we have a date certain that the ordinance is postponed to, right?
October 22nd.
Well, that'll move us along to the next item, which is the consent ordinances in for first reading. It consists of two items, C and D. Does any Alderman wish to remove an item from this consent ordinance?
C.
Well, that now makes it consent ordinance in for first reading consisting of one item. The chair declares it in order for one motion to consider the one ordinance in one motion without debate. Is there a motion to consider this ordinance for first reading?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Cannon, and thank you for the second, Alderman Diastis. That is item D, Ordinance Number 19-00, amend Chapter 102 entitled Taxation Imposing a Municipal Cannabis Retailer's Occupation Tax. The question is, shall this ordinance be moved forward to second reading? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Sanica.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
Besessi.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, that ordinance will move forward. That now circles us back to the Ordinance 19-00, amend Chapter 14, Animals, Prohibit Feeding of Wild Animals. Alderman Cannon, you had requested to pull this, so you're entitled to the first set of comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I was the one who proposed this, and I would like to carry it through, but I also would like to make an amendment to it also, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
We don't really have any punishment or anything that's attached to it.
May I stop you and just, I have to open a motion first to continue, so I apologize.
No, that's right.
Will you make the motion?
I'd make the motion to.
Thank you.
Okay.
May I have a second, Alderman Cannon first? Thank you, Alderman Diastis.
So what I'd like to do is, you know, the idea of this ordinance is we're not out to try to punish people, but that said, if we don't have any punishment attached to it, it really doesn't mean anything. It doesn't give the police officers or anybody else that might enforce this any teeth to get it done. So I'd propose a three-point thing, where the first fine would be $25, the second would be $50, the third would be $100. And again, we're not out to try to punish people, we're here, we'd like people not to feed wild animals with large amounts of food. So that's the only thing, again, I'm not out to try to punish anybody, but I think we need to put some teeth in it, so there's some action against it.
A graduating fine?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So then the ordinance then would read amend Chapter 14, Animals, Prohibit Feeding of Wild Animals, with a graduating fine beginning at?
$25, $50, and $100.
Dollars.
Or if somebody else has a better idea, that's $25, $50, and $100 would be my suggestion.
Okay. Is there a second on Alderman Cannon's?
I'd second that.
Thank you, Alderman Diastis. Is there any discussion on this while we're having the conversation? Alderman, Manager Krumbstock.
Thank you, Mayor Gill. Obviously, if we're going this way, obviously, if we're going to tweak the ordinance, and obviously, a little time for City Attorney Melissa Wolf to do that too, what I would ask, if we are doing graduated, that it, obviously, you said one, two, and three, we would say three or more, because again, if potentially, we have certain people that they don't care about paying a fine, I would prefer that we say three or more, because that's what we have for alarms and other pieces. It's just clarification, because what happens after three, so.
Can we incorporate that into the rule?
Yeah, I think we should adopt whatever pre-existing language we may use in our penalties and fines, wherever else used. Could we just make a note that we would just use pre-existing language?
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any further discussion on this matter? Seeing no further discussion, the question is, shall this ordinance be moved forward as the motion has carried with an additional language to it, which is that of pre-existing language for imposing fines and penalties? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Cannon.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
Besessi.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Sanica.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the ordinance will be moved forward for second reading.
That was just the amendment.
Oh, I mean, yeah, on the amendment, excuse me. So now we have to go back and have a vote, right? Okay. So would the clerk please call the roll on the vote?
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
Besessi.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Sanica.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
That's seven in favor, and so now this does pass. Next item up is to approve the payment of bills on warrant for August 27th. Is there a motion to approve these bills on warrant?
So moved.
Alderman O'Brien, the first, Alderman Veneziano with the second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall the warrant be approved? Will the clerk please call the roll?
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
Besessi.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Sanica.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the warrant is approved. This next item on the agenda consists of the consent resolutions. There are four items, items F through I. Does any Alderman wish to remove any of the items on the consent resolutions? Any other Alderman wish to remove an item?
G.
This next item on the agenda consists of the consent resolutions. There are four items, Items F through I. Does any Alderman wish to remove any of the items on the consent resolutions? Any other Alderman wish to remove an item? Any others? Okay, so the consent resolution now consists of two items, F and H. The chair declares it in order for one motion to consider these two resolutions in one motion without debate. Is there such a motion?
Some.
Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. The question is, shall the two resolutions be adopted? The first resolution being 19-R-91, authorize a contract for a purchase of a 2019 Ford Explorer, replacement for RM265 Public Works pickup, and also Resolution Number 19-R-93, award a professional design engineering services contract relating to the proposed water main improvements on Arbor Drive Phase Two. The question is, shall these two resolutions be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Veneziano.
Yes.
Besasi.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Sanoyka.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Budmets.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
Besasi.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Sanoyka.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, those resolutions are adopted. Circling back, that now leaves us with two items. Item G is the first, Resolution Number 19-R-92. It's to award a contract for Phase One Engineering Services, proposed Hicks Road Bike Path Improvements. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
Is there an opportunity for discussion?
One's...
Okay, so moved.
Alderman Sanoyka, thank you. Thank you, Alderman Veneziano. Alderman Sanoyka, you had asked to have this resolution pulled. You were first up to bat for comment's sake.
Okay, I just wanted to provide some additional information for the council, because today I attended the Northwest Municipal Conference Bicycle and Pedestrian Monthly Meeting. It included members of other municipalities in the northwest suburbs, community stakeholders, and IDOT representatives. So I wanted everyone to know that with the passing of the State Capital Improvement Plan in the state of Illinois, $50 million were set aside just for bike path improvements, increasing our chances for these grants potentially, and I want Rolling Meadows to be a recipient of those funds. So before Rolling Meadows projects can be considered, I believe we must complete Phase One Engineering. And if that's true, I'm willing to approve a $90,000 investment, even if it's... Because by completing this phase in time to hit that December 6th deadline, we will be eligible for the $50 million opportunity.
Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka. Is there further discussion? Alderman Cannon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I'd like to hear a couple of thoughts from Public Works. One of the concerns I have with this project, I question whether we need to put a bike path there, but that's a personal thing. You know, I think there's two issues that I think are worth us pursuing, and that would be the water issue there and also the crossing over Euclid. I understand there's an issue with the crossing there, so I think those are two legitimate parts of it. But I guess the question I would ask is, if we spend this $90,000, I know that there's an issue with water there, but it seems that when you drive down that road, that there's... The height of the road seems to be really out of whack with where the sidewalk's at. So by approving this, are we going to be able to solve that issue going forward, where the water issue will be gone, will go away for good?
That's what the Phase One will tell us, but my, at first blush, based on initial conversations with the city engineers, yes, that would resolve, if not all, most of the drainage problems in there.
Do we need to do anything with the elevation of the road there, since it's so much higher than the sidewalk?
No, there's, as part of the initial conceptual drawings that were done, they talked about potentially doing a retaining wall. So the bike path area, again, it's my understanding, the bike path area would be more closer to the grade of the road, and then there'd be a retaining wall that dropped off to the residential properties to the west.
And so would there be extra sewage lines put in there then?
Probably drainage.
Drainage, excuse me, yeah.
That is my assumption, yes.
Okay. Thanks for the explanation. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome. Is there further comments? Alderman Diastis?
Just a question, those are the funds that we spend on this, on the engineering, is that part of the AB20, or is this just on us?
Yes. Alderman Diastis, that is entirely requirement of the city. Most of the grants we deal with right now will not accept, will not fund Phase One Engineering for these projects, so yes, we would have to invest that money in the Phase One.
Alderman Sanoyka?
To provide additional information for Alderman Diastis's question, in order to be considered for the $50 million, we have to complete Phase One for the ITEP grant itself. There is language on the website that says that the ITEP will no longer fund Phase One Engineering or street lighting that is not co-located with the transportation alternative facility. I called Charles Riddle with the local Roads and Streets Fund at IDOT today to confirm if that phase would qualify for this project, but Director Horn will be able to speak to whether or not we would qualify. From what I understand, we do not.
Yeah, that's my understanding as well. I have not talked to Mr. Riddle about that recently, but it's my understanding through the Northwest Mayor's Technical Committee meeting that I do go to monthly, that Phase One is not reimbursable or eligible for reimbursement.
So then to complete my answer for Alderman Diastis, in order for us to be able to even be considered for the $50 million, we must complete Phase One in time to submit the application by December 6th this year?
Yes, you are correct.
Alderman Veneziano?
And will this engineering firm be able to meet that completion date for us to apply for that grant?
It's my understanding they will. We are pushing it pretty close here, but I'm told that we can still meet that deadline.
Alderman Budmets?
Three or four comments. When this came up in February and March, I don't like the way the packet was written. It said that we were going to have $240,000 in costs, that there would be no spending in fiscal year 2019 for this project, and now there's like $89,900 worth of engineering that we are going to spend in fiscal year 2019 if this is passed. And so I would just like in the future for us to do a better job of writing in what the real costs are, I mean, the engineering, the whole project, so that we're not surprised by $90,000 later. So I understand you didn't write it, but moving forward, you will be writing them. So whatever you can do to provide us with all the information upfront so that we know what we're voting on the first time, it'd be great. Then the proposal from the engineering firm is in April, and so now we're worried about if we can get it done in time, but it's been sitting since April, waiting for us to get it on our plate. So that's another disappointment, and we need to move faster on these things if we're going to do it, so that it happens in a more timely fashion. I will be voting for it, although I'm concerned if we don't get the grant, that we would be wasting $90,000 of the taxpayers' money. So I'm hoping that we use whatever tools and influence that we have available to make sure that we do get accepted with this moving forward. I want to solve the water problem, much, actually, much more than the bike problem. I walk my dog there. I understand, I understand the water problem, and it is very rough. It gets wet there very often. So I'd love to see that problem solved, but I would be voting for it. I just, it's a lot of money to spend on a bike path, 1.1 or 1.2 million dollars, but it has other value, so... And there are streets that need to be resurfaced adjacent to this project, so I have homeowners who are asking me, why can't we get the streets resurfaced, but we also have to solve the water problem. That's it.
Thank you, Alderman Budmets. Any further comments or discussion on this matter?
May I ask one more question, Mr. Mayor?
Leaves your second turn, so yes.
Okay, thank you. So I wanted to ask Mr. Horn if we ever solicit another bid from any other engineering firm, since it's been a couple of months.
As I explained with another Alderman earlier this evening, the Illinois Department of Transportation requires the rates be established for any federal grant program, so it wouldn't matter what engineer we use, the rates are set. We didn't, we don't solicit engineering firms, we do qualification-based selection, so we did not seek other proposals from other engineering firms.
Okay, but in light of that, I guess I've asked about this in the past also, I would really encourage us to start trying to get some bids on some of these things. I know Brooke does nice work, I'm not complaining about their work or saying they do bad work, but I think we really need to make sure that we're getting a good value from them also, besides the professional work they provide. There are a lot of engineering firms in the state, I would wish we would engage in one of them once in a while, just to ask their opinion on how much some of these projects would cost. If we could save $5,000 or $10,000, that's just money for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? Seeing none, the question is, shall the resolution be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Diastis.
Yes.
Sanoyka.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Budmets.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
Besasi.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this resolution is adopted. Well, that now brings us, and the rest of the council, to business and reports for other business. The mayor currently does not have any appointments or proclamations at this time. City clerk reports at this time?
None.
None to read, so then we can move further on with city staff reports, community items of interest. Manager Crumstock?
Thank you, Mayor Gallo. And city council, I do have some add-ons that were not written up. I do want to reiterate that schools are open in Rolling Mouses, please drive carefully, and even driving carefully, I do want to remind, Kirchhoff Road is 35 miles an hour. As you heard, it is turning into a boulevard, and we are aware of that, it's nice new concrete. But again, schools are open, please drive carefully. As Mayor Gallo did mention, we do want to thank everybody who attended the fifth annual windown by the creek on Friday, August 16th. We hope to see you next year. We do really have a special thank you goes out to all the volunteers who made this event a success. If you'd like to volunteer, even if it's an hour, once a month to one of our events, we're greatly appreciative of any volunteer time. We also want to thank the mayor, obviously, for being there to do the intro, there was a little hiccup on the audio, but again, we do appreciate everybody who came out for the fifth annual windown. We also do want to reiterate what Mayor Gallo did mention, that we do want to thank everybody who attended the city market that was held Saturday, August 24th. The next city market is scheduled for Saturday, September 28th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Communion Church at 2720 Kirchhoff Road. We do want to mention that between 10:00 a.m. and 11:00 a.m., there will be a meet and greet with the city council. If anybody's listening to this, you can come out there. There is no agenda, it's for you to actually have discussions with Alderman and the mayor. We do want to mention, obviously, coming up tomorrow night, the Rolling Mouses Community Event Foundation will be conducting a fundraiser at Panera Bread, they're located at 1321 Golf Road. And again, that's August 28th, from 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Panera Bread will generously donate 20% of the sales to the foundation, and again, reiterating the foundation does support every event that we have in the city of Rolling Meadows, for the city of Rolling Meadows, I should say. And actually, you do need to show a flyer with you, it can be on your phone, it can be a handout, we do them have them throughout the city hall, but please, it's a great way of giving back to the foundation. We do want to mention that city hall and Public Works will be closed on Monday, September 2nd, in observance of Labor Day. There will be no refuse collection on Monday, refuse collection will be delayed the entire week by one day, so we wish everyone a safe and happy Labor Day weekend. The next Friday Rock is scheduled for September 13th. This event will again take place between 7:00 p.m. and 10:00 p.m. in Kimball Hill Park. Music this time will be provided by the musical group Billy Elton, so they do Elton John and Billy Joel music. He does have his own following at that point in time, too. We also want to mention, with one of the environmental committee members here, 12th Annual Duck Race will be held on Friday, September 13th. This year's race is still sponsored by the city's environmental committee, the Rolling Meadows Park District Foundation, and it is scheduled to be held...
the person we had that made the recommendations for the equipment is the guy we bought the equipment from. So I guess I would just ask us to be a little prudent and try to get multiple people to give us pricing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? Alderman Sanoyka.
I would just also like to emphasize that when discussing this particular item, many of us have day jobs outside of this, and sometimes those day jobs require us to travel. And so this would allow us to continue to serve as aldermen and be present at City Council in those moments when we can't physically be here. So this is helping us do our job to serve the residents in the best way that we can.
Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka. Any further comments? Seeing none, the question is, shall the resolution be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Diastas.
Yes.
Sanoyka.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Budmans.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
Besessi.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this resolution is adopted. Well, that now brings us, and the rest of the council, to business and reports for other business. The mayor currently does not have any appointments or proclamations at this time. City clerk reports at this time?
None.
None to read, so then we can move further on with city staff reports, community items of interest. Manager Crumstock.
Thank you, Mayor Gallo, and City Council. I do have some add-ons that were not written up. I do want to reiterate that schools are open in Rolling Meadows. Please drive carefully, and even driving carefully, I do want to remind, Kerchoff Road is 35 miles an hour. As you heard, it is turning into a boulevard, and we are aware of that. It's nice new concrete, but again, schools are open, please drive carefully. As Mayor Gallo did mention, we do want to thank everybody who attended the fifth annual wind down by the creek on Friday, August 16th. We hope to see you next year. We do really have a special thank you goes out to all the volunteers who made this event a success. If you'd like to volunteer, even if it's an hour, once a month to one of our events, we're greatly appreciative of any volunteer time. We also want to thank the mayor, obviously, for being there to do the intro. There was a little hiccup on the audio, but again, we do appreciate everybody who came out for the fifth annual wind down. We also do want to reiterate what Mayor Gallo did mention, that we do want to thank everybody who attended the city market that was held Saturday, August 24th. The next city market is scheduled for Saturday, September 28th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Communion Church at 2720 Kerchoff Road. We do want to mention that between 10:00 a.m. and 11:00 a.m., there will be a meet and greet with the City Council. If anybody's listening to this, you can come out there. There is no agenda. It's up to you to actually have discussions with aldermen and the mayor. We do want to mention, obviously, coming up tomorrow night, the Rolling Meadows Community Event Foundation will be conducting a fundraiser at Panera Bread. They're located at 1321 Golf Road, and again, that's August 28th from 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Panera Bread will generously donate 20% of the sales to the foundation. And again, reiterating, the foundation does support every event that we have in the city of Rolling Meadows, for the city of Rolling Meadows, I should say. And actually, you do need to show a flyer with you. It can be on your phone, it can be a handout. We do have them throughout the City Hall, but please, it's a great way of giving back to the foundation. We do want to mention that City Hall Public Works will be closed on Monday, September 2nd in observance of Labor Day. There will be no refuse collection on Monday. Refuse collection will be delayed the entire week by one day, so we wish everyone a safe and happy Labor Day weekend. The next Friday Rock is scheduled for September 13th. This event will again take place between 7:00 p.m. and 10:00 p.m. in Kimball Hill Park. Music this time will be provided by the musical group Billy Elton, so they do Elton John and Billy Joel music. He does have his own following at that point in time, too. We also want to mention, with one of the environmental committee members here, 12th Annual Duck Race will be held on Friday, September 13th. This year's race is still sponsored by the city's environmental committee, the Rolling Meadows Park District Foundation, and it is scheduled to be held at the Waterfowl or the Bridge Over the Creek in Kimball Hill Park at 6:30 p.m. One time only, but it's five ducks per, $5 per duck. A quack pack is five ducks for $20. And the environmental committee member who's sitting over there, Maggie Trevor, would be more than happy to sell you. They do have some left. It'd be really strange if they did not sell out and that duck wins. Do you want to mention that the next bike ride, sponsored by the environmental committee, is also scheduled for Saturday, September 28th, starting at 9:00 a.m. at the Communion Church, 2720 Kerchoff Road? So you could always do the bike ride, then you can do the meet and greet, and then stay for the market. Not like I'm trying to push all, everybody at everything, but you can do that. And then we do want to thank Meadows Cruise Nights for continuing at Meadows Christian Fellowship, located at 2401 Kerchoff Road. The cruisers will be around from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. on Fridays, and this goes all the way through September 6th. Please join the family fun at 2401 Kerchoff Road. If you want additional information, please visit their website. Obviously, the reminder, because it is August, have you seen the electronic news and views, what we call e-news and views? It is on our website at www.citerrm.org. Click on News and Views. This is the sister publication of the print newsletter that comes out. Obviously, it's the last meeting for the month, so we do want to mention for September, the two main committee meetings that are coming up. Economic Development Committee will be meeting Tuesday, September 3rd at 6:00 p.m. Tentatively, the items scheduled for this meeting consist of business list feedback and distribution over the new list that have happened. Business Advocate update, Next Level Northwest update. There's a 6B extension request by LC Mold. There's a 6B discussion potentially for Molon Motors in the city. There are other items of interest in the Chamber of Commerce update. Also on that night, Tuesday, September 3rd at 7:30 p.m., the Planning and Zoning Commission will be meeting. There is one member here. Tentatively, there are three items to be heard at that meeting. A sign appeal for electronic billboard sign at 3105 Tollview Drive. That's in our M1 Manufacturing District. Sam Rody, again, by our media petition, this is being continued again from our July 2nd meeting. There's a tax amendment for a zoning code of ordinances to update Section 122-27 D12. The temporary seasonal outdoor seating for the city of Rolling Meadows is the petitioner. This was also continued from the July 2nd meeting. And then there's a variance request for side yard setback for building addition at 3737 38, 37 Industrial Avenue. That's in our M1 Manufacturing District. Nancy Lee Carlson of Leaderman Peterson Corporation is the petitioner, and this was also. Those are the three items that are tentatively being moved. I do want to mention two other ones that I said I do have. Obviously, one that's kind of new, and the City Council has that, and we'll do some additional posting on this, is that on Saturday, September 14th, between noon and 8:00 p.m. outside of the Stadium Sports Club and Pizza, that's a lot at 4015 Algonquin Road, for the first time, there will be Rolling in the Cuisine food truck event. We will have flyers, like I said. This is actually a benefit for the Rolling Meadows Chamber of Commerce and Resources for Community Living. We'll have additional information. Obviously, there's food trucks right now, as of looking at the flyer. Pierogi Squad, Kona Ice, Cook's Ice Cream, Twisted Classic, Perk in Pickle, Go Doggy Run, Matt's Mobile Meats, Rochelle's, New Orleans Cuisine. There will be some family friend activities, and obviously, an Oktoberfest-style beer garden, and then there's some parking. This is general admission, it is a dollar per person, but there are VIP admission for $15 per person. This includes early admission, so you can always avoid lines. There will be one free drink ticket and one free raffle ticket that's through the Chamber of Commerce. And then obviously, we do want to mention one more thing. Please go to the dine for the foundation, but obviously, they just left, but Bigsby will be holding its fifth annual anniversary, I should say, fifth anniversary, also on Wednesday. Obviously, these are the new owners trying to do a little bit different. There's a food truck that will be there. It goes from Wednesday from 4:00 p.m. to when they close, but those are items of interest with the additions.
Thanks for sharing those items of interest. Why don't we go ahead and keep that party alive with new businesses for July 2019?
Because I talked so much on items of interest, there are five of them in front of you.
All right, then let's look to Director Horn for traffic review committee reports.
Thank you, Mayor. Only a few items to report on this month. The ribbon cutting obviously happened for the Euclid Bike Path, that will come off the list. Central road stop sign issue at Weber Drive has been resolved, so that will come off the list. We did have two residents attend our meeting last month regarding concerns about speed on Wilkie Road. Right now, staff is investigating the original speed studies done on Wilkie Road to avoid performing another speed study. The speed study, we estimated about $4,000 to do that. That's something we would come back to City Council and request direction on whether we should pursue that. Based on state requirements, it's likely that we would not be able to reduce it to the speed requested by the residents, but we certainly are considering reducing it about five miles an hour to meet the warrants of the Illinois Department of Transportation.
Thank you for sharing that. I think that's definitely going to impact some residents in the community, and we'd like to get their feedback as well. That brings us now to matters not on the agenda. Are there items, Alderman Budmans, that are not on the agenda?
Yep, Mayor. The original intent of G1 licenses, I understand it, was to allow existing restaurants to remain competitive with the restaurants in neighboring communities by having the opportunity to offer their patrons the opportunity of gaming. Regardless of what happens with the application by Big Vs, I think that the restaurants in time have had an ample opportunity to apply for a G1 license. At the July Cow, the owner of Daisy stated that he anticipated that the floodgates would be open and that national chains would be interested in operating here. Given the issues surrounding the unwritten expectations for restaurants, the prior mayors, the way he enforced it or chose to read it, I think it's important that we review this. I think it's nonsense that all of the council goes to one particular establishment to determine if they have an appropriate kitchen or not. So I think it's time that we review the ordinance, tighten up the loopholes, and preserve the quality of our community. So I move and propose that we have a 90-day moratorium on the acceptance of any new applications for G1 licenses, notwithstanding the current license by Big Vs. But at this point, every restaurant in town has had the opportunity, so before we start accepting applications from all kinds of new people, let's find out, and let's tighten it up, find out what this council wants to do as a group, and modify it so that it reflects our current thinking on what the G1 license should look at. So I'm looking for a second if somebody would like to do so.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka, for the second. So as I understand it, you're making a motion to suspend any movement or attraction of applicants for a G1 at this time, so we can go ahead and revise the language of the G1?
For a period of 90 days.
90 days? And we have a second on that, so is there any discussion? Manager Crumstock?
I would just say, the only comment is, I understand what you're saying, but there are at least two establishments right now that are in the process, they're in the permit, they're doing their full build-outs at this point in time. So they've been very upfront, that's why they were going to be a restaurant, and so they would be looking for the G1. So they're in process already, and they should be done relatively during that 90 days, so...
So are these existing restaurants in town, or are these new restaurants?
These are completely new.
Okay, so then, they really don't, I mean...
I believe we could, we could go ahead in the spirit, I believe we could accommodate everybody by working on the language and not holding up these two businesses significantly. I mean, for example, we've held up Big Vs, and it didn't seem to matter, so it's okay if they have to wait, and they're currently in the build process right now?
That is correct.
And have they received their liquor licenses?
One has their liquor license, one has not got their liquor license. One is obviously on one side of the community that currently only has one establishment in that area, but they do have, we recently gave them a A1 liquor license.
Okay. I think it's, they're still in a mature enough phase where we can work through this as a council and then not impact their business too much. Further discussion? Alderman Besessi?
Yes. One thing I do know on our G1 licenses, I believe we have a cap of seven. Anyways, we're at six. Do we have a cap on it?
So technically, sorry, Mayor.
That we would have to vote?
So technically, the city of Rolling Meadows does not have a cap. We have open or closed. So right now, the city of Rolling Meadows has six G1s that are in place. So what you're referring to, seven, that would have been opening up a seventh G1 license, that would have been, but we don't have open licenses. We close them or we open them as needed.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Veneziano, you have a question?
Just to clarify, you are asking for any new applications, not an application already in process?
Right, so Big Vs' application's in process, there are no other applications that we've had the opportunity to review or vote on. So at this point, I'm just saying that we should take this opportunity and fix this before others come forward, and we have to go through this whole process again. Let's define what a restaurant really is, and what a gaming facility is, et cetera.
Further comments, Alderman Cannon, then Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't disagree with the premise behind his offer. I guess I just don't understand why it has to be 90 days. I mean, if we have agreed tonight already that October 22nd would be the date that we would get back to the one group, I'm not trying to get picky here, but it just seems like 90 might be more. I don't want to scare anybody off who might want to come to do business here. So that's my only thing. Again, I agree with the general premise, that we need to get it fixed. I think most of us agree.
I agree, yeah. And 90 days is an arbitrary timeline that was put out, and I'm sure Alderman Budmans would be okay with that, but in looking at this the past two weeks, myself as liquor commissioner, and in looking at the horizon of those potential applicants, there are a lot of areas that I will bring forward as informational points for the council to recognize, if you haven't already recognized them, but further so we could define them appropriately, and then clean up the definitions that we have in other ordinances that parallel one another that are completely out of sync. And so it's just a good exercise. Alderman Budmans, if you want to change your timeframe? Yeah, obviously, this is going to take at least one cow, maybe two, and so I'm not looking for 90 days as an arbitrary thing, I'm just giving us enough time to get it done. And so if we fix the G1, we pass a new G1, or we modify the G1, then obviously, we can remove that moratorium, because we've now fixed the problem, and it's no longer applicable.
Correct. Alderman O'Brien?
My thing was probably just a point of clarification, if it's for staff or not. For the ones that are in flight now, I think the biggest question, at least from the last couple of months here since we've been a new council, is that hood. Since they are in the build-out phase, would it potentially impact them versus going forward? I mean, I know we had the Bigsby quote provided here before to us at the last cow meeting, is, would they be at a point in their build-out phase where it would be a no-go note, if they need to put a hood in or not?
Both of them are putting hoods.
Regardless of how the ordinance would shake out?
Regardless of what's going on, they are putting in hoods, and like I said, and again, one's maybe 30 days out, but again, that's all construction and some of the other pieces, but again, and I guess the only other caveat, now that we're talking about 90 days or not, anybody can apply, but until it gets to you, and you know, that's the thing, I can also hold something, if you're giving me the direction, saying, hold until we're done with our discussions, that's loud and clear, other than not doing a moratorium. And I can tell people that very easy, until we are clarified and everything is to a point that everybody's comfortable with, but they are building with hoods.
Thank you.
Okay, so do you want to just change the timeframe to upon completion for your motion?
Sure.
And then the question becomes, do we put a moratorium on new applicants for a timeframe upon completion of a revised G1? Can I get the clerk to call the roll?
Sure.
Thank you.
Sanoyka.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Budmans.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
Besessi.
Yes.
Diastas.
Yes.
And seven in favor, so we will take the time to revise this G1 and pause on any
new applicants coming in for a G1. Are there further matters not on the agenda at this time? Alderman Besessi?
I'd like to just say that I'd like to discuss the possibility of reinstituting Chipper Week, and then talk about it at one of our next future cows. That's basically it.
Thank you. Further comments or matters not on the agenda? Alderman Cannon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a call from a resident this week, and that person was wondering if the committees' positions that are open right now, is there going to be a call for resumes, or, I'm not sure, I didn't know how to answer the question. He said he might be interested in applying for one of those positions, but he, I didn't know which committee, and I don't know where we're at with any of that.
Yeah, so our city's website does have a list of committees, it does have a list of vacancies and terms that are available, or those individuals who are in current terms, and when those expiration dates are. If the individual is interested in a given committee, please forward him to me. Another alderman came to me private this evening, asking the same question, and there are available spaces.
So sent it directly to you?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Further matters not on the agenda? Seeing no more matters not on the agenda, there is a request to go into closed session, and we will discuss land acquisition of the letter ILCS 120-2C5 of the Open Meetings Act, as well as personnel, 5 ILCS 120-2C1 of the Illinois Opens Meetings Act. It does require a motion and a roll call vote. Do I have a motion from an alderman?
Some move.
Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka. Thank you, Alderman Veneziano. Is there any discussion ongoing in the closed session? Seeing none, the clerk please call the roll.
Cannon.
Yes.
Budmans.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
Besessi.
Yes.
Diastas.
Yes.
Sanoyka.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, we will now enter into closed session. The audience and press are advised that we do not anticipate taking any action upon return to open session. Thank you.